I'd like to call the meeting of the 19th March Board of Commissioners for Rockingham County, two orders. Things are much different today, obviously, for most of you, I hope, watching, live streaming. We're taking the precautions as best we know how to do it.
Mr. Chairman, turn to Michael.
In regard to the virus, so, a much different format here. So Lance, I'm going to ask you, if you would, to start our meeting with invocation and then, Officer Pertle, with your police hat on, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance afterward.
Okay, would please stand. Dear heavenly Father, I come to you in the mighty name of Jesus, thanking you and praising you for our great county. I thank you for the plan you gave to our forefathers by which to govern our nation and for the division of power so that our destiny does not rest in the hands of one person. In praying for those in authority, I therefore lift up our Board of Commissioners to you. I pray that by your holy power, our Commissioners will remember that they have our community in their hands when it comes to making this a better place to live, work, and enjoy. Father, I ask you to give them wisdom and make decisions that would strengthen and prosper their entire populace of our county. I desire that they would make right decisions concerning the politics, the social welfare, and the economics of our county. I pray that those that have the infection of the coronavirus, they be cured, those who are in the path. Please ease the concerns and fears of this coronavirus as you are a just God that will protect and guide us. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Place the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have the agenda before you, and we have had it for about the last 11 days or so. You've had a chance to review it. Any comments or motions regarding our approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to approve the agenda as presented with eliminating item number nine.
And I believe that elimination would be a postponement of item nine, is that correct?
That's even better. A postponement of item number nine.
And ten?
And ten. No, no, just nine, just nine.
For public information, though we're not looking at it tonight, we have reviewed these things, and so nine and 10 will happen at an announced date.
I think we still need 10 because number eight's going to require a public hearing.
That's correct.
Yeah, so just number nine only.
Mr. Chairman. So I'm asking the public to pay attention to the review of rezoning case number 2020-01 that involves Calvary Road, and will occur at an announced date in the future. With that adjustment, do we have a second?
Second.
And secondly, further discussion here, none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay, the agenda is accepted. Item five has to do with two proclamation. I'm going to ask our county manager to read both of these. The first one has to do with Operation Big Sweep or Litter Sweep here in Rockingham County.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'll ask that if you wouldn't mind allow our attorney to read the one in regards to the Creek Week. With Rockingham County Spring Litter Sweep Proclamation, the North Carolina Department of Transportation organizes two annual statewide litter sweep events to work toward the goal of clean and beautiful roads. Additionally, the focus of these campaigns is to motivate groups and individuals to clean litter along the road sides and to discourage the practice of littering resulting in a cleaner Rockingham County. Therefore, a cleaner Rockingham County, whereas the North Carolina beauty of our county and state, as well as a clean environment, are sources of pride for all citizens attracted tourists and aiding in recruiting new industries, and whereas the cleanup will improve the aesthetics of Rockingham County, increase awareness of the need for cleaner road sides, and emphasize the importance of not littering. And whereas the cleanup scheduled for March, excuse me, April 11th through April the 25th, 2020, will unite adopt the highway volunteers, Department of Correction inmates, and community service workers, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation employees, North Carolina DOT also encourages local governments and communities, civic and professional organizations, businesses, churches, schools, families, and individual citizens to participate by furnishing cleanup materials and disposal. And whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation will provide pickup of collected trash, tires, and other abandoned items and transport them to the Rockingham County landfill, North Carolina DOT shall be exempt from landfill tipping charges for disposal of such items from April 13th to April 27th, 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners that April 11th through April 25th, 2020 is hereby proclaimed Rockingham County Spring Litter Sweep.
Thank you very much. I believe this proclamation requires a vote, doesn't it?
So moved.
Moved and second, further conversation, here, none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. Item B is a proclamation. Counselor Morris.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Resolution declaring April 11th through 18th, 2020 as Rockingham County, North Carolina Creek Week. Whereas water is a basic and essential need for all life, and whereas Rockingham County is rich in natural resources and beauty, and whereas clean water and landscapes contribute to the growth of tourism and economic development in Rockingham County, and whereas trash fouls are waterways as well as our landscapes, and whereas every citizen should contribute to keeping our environment clean and healthy by working together to preserve clean water and the natural beauty of our surroundings, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Rockingham County supports the right to clean, swimable, and fishable waters for our residents and the generations to come, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Rockingham County and the Dan River Keeper value the quality of our water resources, geography, their history, and significance, and whereas Creek Week is a nationwide community effort to enjoy our bountiful recreational opportunities and retrieve litter from North Carolina's waterways and landscapes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners hereby declares April 11th through 18th, 2020 as Rockingham County Creek Week 2020, and does further hereby urge every citizen to do his or her part to restore the beauty and function of our streams by volunteering to participate in the Creek Week 2020 event and/or engaging civic, school, and church groups to organize activities to contribute therein, adopted the 16th day of March, 2020. Mr. Chair.
Motion to adopt proclamation of Creek Week?
So moved. Second.
Moved and second, further conversation, here, none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. Item six is a consent agenda, which are items which are non-controversial in nature, but if any of the public has particular questions concerning item six, any of those, please contact our county manager, Lance Metzler, and he'll be glad to explain it. And if you need further assistance from your Commissioners, we will as well. Any motions concerning item six?
I'd make that motion, but I also have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Please make it.
I would just note, please note that under D, for less affair, Department of Health and Human Services Director, there is the proclamation of April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I just know that those folks down there that work in this, in that department, see some atrocities on a daily basis, and they do an amazing job. I know she oversees social services, the health department, of course, youth services, but the child abuse, those folks who work those tough cases, they just, my gratitude goes out to them and everything that they do. So with that, I will absolutely make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Moved and second, further discussion, here, none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. Gentlemen, tonight, we have no one signed up for public comment. Item eight, Lance, are you going to take care of Lee Cockburn's?
He has way out there. Thank you, can you hear me? So this is a public hearing to consider the approval and apportionment from the general fund in an amount not to exceed 136,766, which will be distributed to ACIS, which is a new company that we should, well now with the today's states with coronavirus, I'm not sure when we'll get to do an announcement, but it's a new company that will be locating in the Eden area, about $10 million in capital investment, 66 new jobs, with an average wage of over $57,000, and really excited about their joining our corporate community.
Awesome.
Mrs. Cockburn, you know, we discussed this in closed session, so all of us are familiar. Is there anything that would be important for the public to know about this arriving business?
Not at the moment, just stay tuned for when we can do a ribbon cutting, a formal announcement.
Questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
I believe we need a motion.
Need to open a public hearing first.
It ain't much public we could hear, but.
I will declare the public hearing open at this time, and solicit anybody that wishes to speak on item eight.
I don't think nobody signed up, did they?
Nobody signed up, but I'm checking with our charging of arms, is anybody in the hall?
Nope.
Since nobody's pressed, I declare the public hearing closed.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a motion and a second, further discussion, here, nothing, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. Keith Duncan is going to tell us a little bit about Cardinal. All right. You'll notice we graciously removed the antagonistic audience.
I never saw this setup when I was here. Hey, I appreciate your time, it's a pleasure to be here and to address the board. It's been a while since I sort of briefed you on Cardinal Innovations Healthcare and some of the things we've done in the past year. And as you know, Cardinals are MCO, one of seven in North Carolina, and what's so crazy about Cardinal, our MCO catchment area starts in Mecklenburg, comes up 85, and goes within 45 miles of Albemarle Sound, down the Virginia border. So it's just, it's a large district, 20 counties. Since I talked to you last, we've been hard at work, and I've also been made Chair of Governance Committee and also a member of the Executive Committee. How I got there, I don't know, but I'm glad to have the opportunity. We have a new board member coming on board that's going to replace Dana, her seat, a guy named Trey Tang from down in Stanley, and we had two great applicants, and we had, could only pick one, but he was our choice, and he sort of had his boots-on-the-ground type guy, lot of experience in the field, so he's going to be a great addition, and he meets that statutory requirement that the state requires for that seat. We continue to watch our finances, the spending, travel expenses, that's been reeled in quite a bit, and it's watched on a monthly basis, and we have caps, a cardinal in place that limits expenditures. We do have struggles, we continue to, like everybody else, we do have daily struggles. You know, we spend about $2.5 million a day to operate Cardinal, that's a lot of money to handle almost, it's not far from being a billion dollars a year. Senator Berger's been gracious, we meet with him on a periodic basis, the fact we just met with him probably a month ago in his office, keep him informed to where we are at Cardinal, and we certainly want him and the Speaker to feel comfortable on what we're doing, if we're not, then we want them to let us know. And I do want to tell you something, and this is my personal opinion only, but you know, you hear about the rollout plan coming, and then it's not coming, keeps getting delayed, and right now, I would say it's dead in its tracks for the time being, but I've got a big problem with that plan, and I've let it be known, and my reason is, to me, is put in competition against the MCOs that were designated to look after the Medicaid money in the first place, and I think the DHH plan, when you bring in insurance companies into the mix to pick and choose where you want a patient to get services, when it comes to an insurance company, it's going to turn out like the healthcare part has turned out. That's my personal opinion. So, and we've expressed that to Senator Berger, and so we'll sort of see where that goes down the road. With all the other things that's happened now, it's going to change a lot of plans for the, where we go down the road. And got an email from Trey today, our CEO, I haven't really read it yet, but it was his plan to address the coronavirus with our patients, and, because that's the reason we're all there, they're our top priority, that's the reason we're there to begin with, to look out to those who have the daily struggles with mental health, substance abuse, suicide prevention, and ADD. So I think I've covered it where we are. We meet next month in Henderson, we rotate the meetings every quarter to equal it out for the board members. I think we may be doing, like y'all are doing tonight, we leave my guests. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad, I didn't want to take a lot of your time, I know you've got some people waiting, but if you've got any questions, I might be able to answer them. I know Commissioner Richardson chairs up that CCAB board.
I don't have any questions, just Keith, thank you for spending the time to take care of this for us, and devoting this time for our citizens, and the citizens for this entire catchment area, so we really appreciate what you're doing.
And you know, I appreciate the opportunity, and I do want to say, I'm giving it what I think I can give, and I'm taking it seriously. But there's one thing I do want to tell you too, to those people out here that provide services that don't get assistance, and I'm going to throw his name like Cecil Cottrell and a couple of other people in our county that provide a great service to individuals that just get pride help, we couldn't make it without them, and they reach out to so many people in need, and so that's all I got. I appreciate your time, and good luck with all the stuff that's going on. It's a tough situation to be in for y'all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Keith. We appreciate what you're doing, and I'll tell you tomorrow after 4 o'clock what the CCAB decides.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Keith.
Item 12, Mr. Lassiter.
It's juvenile prison?
Yes. Not Mark Johnson, the...
William Lassiter. Wow.
Ready?
Well, first of all, thanks for coming here and braving the traffic, and we're quite interested to know your plan, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, I appreciate you inviting us to come and speak to you this afternoon, and tell you a little bit about the plan that we're doing for the Rockingham Youth Development Center. This is new construction that we're working on. I don't think we've presented the plan yet to the Commission Board. Most of the zoning has been handled through the city, the land was annexed into Reedsville City, but the land that's right across the street is still in the county, and so we wanted to give you a full update of where we are and what this project looks like, and we're really excited to be coming to Rockingham County, and I want to start out by thanking, your county manager has just been outstanding to work with, and your county staff has been wonderful to work with, including your sheriff, and so we really appreciate all the support that the county's given us in starting this project. So my name is William Lassiter, I'm the Deputy Secretary for the Department of Public Safety over juvenile justice, as part of the Raise the Age Initiative, which allows 16 or 17-year-olds to stay in the juvenile justice system. We need additional beds across the state to house juveniles, and so we are in the process of building a new facility. The General Assembly allocated funding for us to do that two years ago, actually back in 2017, and we've started the process of making that a reality. And so the actual facility itself, you can see what it's going to look like over here on the board. The purpose of the Youth Development Center is to, it does house committed juveniles to the state of North Carolina. These are juveniles that have made a mistake and need some additional help turning around their lives, and so the facility itself offers educational services, mentoring services, vocational services, mental health, and physical health services at the facility. It will be a 60-bed facility, and this is what it will look like, and we've got, all the architectural plans have been approved, and we're all set to go, and then last year, as the market has been really strong for construction, we put it out for bid, and the bid came back in $11 million over budget, which is significant, obviously, and this was after I had already gone to the General Assembly twice and asked for additional funding for the project, and not wanting to really have to do that again, we were trying to come up with a different option. And the different option that we have come up with is that we would like to use the inmate construction program. What is the inmate construction program? It is actually, is what it sounds like, we use inmates from facilities across the state that will come in and help us actually build the facility. The inmate construction program actually is a program where inmates can get certified in these skills, such as masonry, plumbing, electrical, and once they leave the facility, they'll have an employable skill that they can live, go back out into their communities and live and be productive citizens. So we wanted to give you a heads up on that and tell you how that's going to work, and I brought Mark with me. Mark is in charge of the inmate construction program for the state of North Carolina. I'm his customer in this case, as the juvenile justice department, and then the inmate construction program will be actually the program that will be built in the facility. But I can answer any questions that you may have about the facility itself, it is a 60-bed facility, it will employ about 120 staff members in your county, in the Reedsville area. The jobs will range from starting around $35,000 to the director of the facility will make close to $100,000 a year, so a good range in jobs, good opportunities in your local community for employment, and in the inmate construction program, we'll have people that will oversee the development of the, and construction of the facility. They will be staying here in the county, at the hotel that's right down the street from where the new facility will be built, and we will also be using, obviously, the restaurants and things around the local community as they're doing that staffing. Now the inmates themselves won't get, go out to eat unfortunately, but the staff that are overseeing them in the project and the inmate construction program would be able to do that. So just want to give you a little idea of what economic development this will provide for the community also. We're really excited about partnering with Rockingham County and the city of Reedsville. As I said, they've been great partners, and we would love to get mentors and people from the local community that would like to work with these young people moving forward. We've already met with the police chief in Reedsville to explain the program and how the inmate construction program works, just talked to the sheriff a few minutes ago, and we're going to work with him along the way on how that program will work also. So I'm going to give Mark just a couple of minutes to tell you a little bit about the inmate construction program and what that will look like in your community.
How are y'all doing tonight? Thank you for having us, we're excited to be here, and we're excited to put our mark on this project. I think it's a marquee project for us, and hopefully it's a marquee project for you guys. The inmate construction program, not sure any of you know the history of it, some of you might. Modern-day establishment is 1993, but the state of North Carolina's been working inmates since Central Prison's been built. In 2000, we were established as the Engineering Construction Trades Apprenticeship and Training Program, which is certified through the Department of Labor, as well as the North Carolina Community Colleges. Since 2000, we have issued over 250 journeyman-level certifications in all, all construction trades, electrical, carpentry, HVAC, masonry, concrete, fabrication, certified welders, so on and so forth. Currently, we are working about 350 medium custody and minimum custody offenders across the state, and that's broken up in about 18 different projects. We do everything from new construction to renovations, all the way down to major maintenance. It's a voluntary program for both medium custody and minimum custody offenders, and it does have strict requirements for eligibility, they have to, all offenders have to be 90 days fraction free before they can sign up within the program, they cannot have any gang affiliations, they cannot have any escapes on their record, and they can't have any pending charges or detainers on their record. As an organization, the inmate construction program is broken up into, from a personnel standpoint, we're broken up into two groups, the construction logistics group and the operations group. Logistics group handles all the procurement, buyout, estimating of the materials, how long the scheduling work, all that's done by office staff of professionals, licensed engineers, construction folks that have been in the business for years. On the operations side, we have what we call red shirts, and they're trade supervisors, they're skilled within all the trades of construction, and they're tasked with supervising and training the offenders. We get offenders from all skill sets, and we train them to do what they need, what we need to be done, and at the end of the day, they can either earn their apprenticeship in a certain trade, or they can just have valuable job skills when they get out. Our main focus is broken down into three things. Safety, our biggest thing is we want our personnel to go home. They are civilians, and they work for the state, and we want them to go home and see their families. Secondly, is quality, we take high pride in the quality of work that we do, we would put it up against any major contractor that's out there. And rehabilitation, ultimate goal is to reduce recidivism for these offenders and give them a skill set that sets them up for life after they, after prison. Specifics about the project, I'm assuming most of y'all have seen the layout, but the job site will look like a prison for roughly 24 months. It will have a 12-foot-tall razor-ribbon fence around it, they have razor-ribbon at the top, it'll be blacked out with no visible fabric. We'll have a kind of a lay-down yard towards the front, which is shaded by the green area, and that's where we'll have our construction trailers, all our material will lay down there. The offenders will come into a secure Sallyport, which is shown in the yellow box, the offenders will be checked, they will get off the bus and enter the job site, which is past the yellow, or just past the green zone, and when, at the end of the day, they will get back on the bus within that secure Sallyport and be returned back to the prison. So offenders in medium custody will not be able to leave the blue outlined perimeter, which is what we call the secure facility. And as you can see in the top left corner, there will be, for lack of a better term, guard towers, these are mobile, they can be taken down and put back up very quickly. There will be correctional officers in those guard towers with shotguns, so all the offenders will be working under gun control, and that's a requirement for medium custody offenders. Any questions for us, and how this is going to work, and we, we, we're going to have medium and minimum custody, we're going to have about 10 minimum custody, and so you'll see them in the green zone, walking around the perimeter, keeping things picked up, there will be no interaction between medium and minimum. So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns you might have on the logistics of the site.
I don't have a, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a site question, I just had a, just a general question. I take it with your inmate custody program, you will not use any local subcontract, everything will be done by the folks within the program itself?
To a certain extent. There will be some private contracts let for this project, and it'll be overseen by our group. We aren't allowed to do certain types of work that require long-term warranties, the roof will be subbed out, so that'll be an outside contractor, and those contractors will be treated like any other contractor that goes in and does private construction within a prison, they'll be screened, their tools will be checked in every day, so they'll have to go through the same security. We are subbing out the paving and grading and the site work, so the idea is, by the time we get there in September, October, the entire site will be prepped and graded with all the underground utilities installed, and possibly even a first layer of asphalt in the parking lot for us to use as a laydown area. The fire alarm contract, we sub that out, it's Smarts and Parts, so we do all the conduit and the wire pulling, but we sub out the components and the programming, as well as the service, warranty service work. HVAC controls, we do the same thing as a Smarts and Parts contract, and I'm trying to think, we, everything else is either procured via just materials from the low bidder via e-procurement, or we might do like an isolated contract for detention equipment, where that vendor provides us with the materials and the oversight for us to do the work, so.
Follow-up again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Procurement of the, of the, I guess, the building supplies comes off a state contract price, I mean, we're not using local, I noticed the front of it is brick.
Yes.
We've had some brick buildings where the brick was shipped in from somewhere besides the edge of... the edge of Rockingham.
Yeah.
So.
What I can tell you is that we're under the, we're under the same procurement policy as the rest of the state. Brick is not something that's on a state contract. What we do is we put together what we need and we solicit local as well as any vendor that's registered with the state of North Carolina. And at that point, it's basically a competitive bid where you bid for, you have three competitive bidders and the low bidder wins as long as they meet the requirements for the specifications, the color, the finish, all that good stuff. So, state contract, not necessarily, but some things are. Like paint, it's a state contract. We have to buy the paint from PPG. Brick is not one of them. All our major building materials for the masonry and the concrete, all that will probably be coming from a local vendor.
Okay. Thanks. I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
How many inmates at any one time will be on the job site?
At any one time, at our fullest capacity, we'll have 110 inmates. And that's 100 medium custody and 10 minimum custody.
Coming from casual?
The 10, the 100 will come from casual and the 10 will probably come from Dan River.
Dan River Prison worked for him.
Yes, sir.
He used to work there.
Chairman, I got one more question. I know we said it's a 60-bed facility, but is there, is there any room or plan for future expansion or could this facility be expanded to more than 60 beds? Is it going to be, I really can't tell from the front of it. Is it going to be laid out in a pod system where you could add more pods?
Yes, sir. It could be expanded. Right now, we made an agreement with the city and the county when we first got the zoning on this that we would stick to this plan. If we wanted to add beds down in the future, we would need to go back and ask for that in zoning and everything, but it is a pod style that could be added onto.
Yeah, this question for you, Mr. Laster.
Yes, sir.
I think, I've done some math up here and I used to be involved in dealing with folks that enjoyed grants from your department. So, I was keenly interested in how much it costs us to incarcerate. And I've been following this closely because I think we were the 49th state
Yes, sir.
to, to stop treating 16- to 17-year-olds as adults. So, I was interested in product, but just salaries, it looks like about a $70,000 per student, let's call them, cost to incarcerate these young people. Is that, is that what you anticipate? And how's that compared to the rest of the state?
So, for a youth development center, it is more expensive than an adult facility and that's intentional and, but it's also driven by state and federal guidelines. So, for us to meet what are called the prison rape elimination at guidelines for juveniles is a 1 to 8 ratio. And so, it's a much more intensive model than you would see in an adult prison where you can have ratios up to 1 to 50. And so, the cost is higher, but for that cost, you get a better return on your investment. What I mean by that is that a kid leaving a youth development center has a 40% recidivism rate right now. We want to do even better than that, but 40% is, if you compare that to a 16- or 17-year-old that goes to an adult prison, they have a 75% recidivism rate. So, we cut it in, almost in half by sending them to one of these youth development centers. So, it is expensive, but you get a very good return on your investment by that, by them going to one of these youth development centers. And so, that's, that's why Raise the Age was very important. One of the other factors with Raise the Age is that we try to keep as many of those juveniles in community-based programming. And y'all have great community-based programming right here in Rockingham County through Rockingham Youth Services that does an outstanding job of trying to keep kids out of committed facilities and where we've seen very effective results also.
Well, I look forward to seeing it. I'm not trying to be smart aleck, you know. We could send them to Wake Forest for $48,000 a year. So, it makes you question the effort and the cost and time and money for what we get back. So, I appreciate you taking time to explain that.
Thank you for coming up here.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, further questions for these gentlemen?
Thank you.
We look forward to having you as part of our community and Reesville is part of the county, so we do take an intense interest and encourage you anytime, or any of your staff. I believe you know some of our Rockingham County people and the Department of Corrections there, Mr. Bennett in particular.
Absolutely. The boy's a great guy.
Mr. Chairman, did you remind us, you may have said it and I didn't catch it, the anticipated completion date?
So, we're looking at 2022 and we're hoping earlier in the year, but I wish I could have them tomorrow because I need beds tomorrow, but it's probably looking like later half of 2022. So, probably November, December.
Where are they in the meantime, by the way?
So, right now, we are temporarily reopening Dillon, CA Dillon Youth Development Center and it's, it's housing some of these juveniles. We're working with several of the counties across the state to take over old jails that they're not using to house some of these juveniles. Also, Mecklenburg County gave us one of their facilities. Madison County's given us a facility and we're working with other sheriffs across the state right now to contract with them to hold some of these juveniles.
Well, Mr. Laster, Mr. Johnson, I certainly appreciate it. Further questions, gentlemen?
No, I think I did read some of you was looking at rehabbing some of the old facilities to address some of the potential of, or an increase in the juvenile youth development need, the need for the development center, so thank you.
And I would just answer the question you had about the difference between, I don't disagree with you one bit. I wish the cost was cheaper, but when you look at the young people that we get into the system, they're very different than someone that would go to Wake Forest, meaning that they're not the choir kid for sure. These are kids that often...
Perceptive there, Mr. Laster.
So.
I don't know what I'm doing.
Thank y'all so much for your, giving us some time this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What is that buzz?
I said, no.
You keep hearing that buzzing? It ain't my phone.
Yeah, so I know you didn't. Well, I figured out what that noise is.
Rory says it's the camera up there.
It works.
You ready, Susan? I keep thinking it's my phone.
Yeah, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
You've got quite a problem and we look forward to your resolution thereof.
Okay, so I'm with one of the hot topics tonight, so I'm going to talk to you guys about the coronavirus. It's in every newspaper, every article.
Get her to the mic.
People on social media, so we're going to talk about it.
Yeah, you're going to have to speak into the...
Oh, sorry.
Speak into the machine.
So, the symptoms of the COVID-19, as you probably already know, are fever, lower respiratory symptoms, a cough and shortness of breath. And they're saying a fever is 100.4 is what they're giving us as guidance to go by. You can have upper respiratory symptoms, but they are really classifying it as mostly lower respiratory and that can lead to the pneumonia problems. Prevention is, of course, if you've not heard it yet, wash your hands 20 seconds. Soap and water's not available, then you use your alcohol-based hand sanitizers. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, mouth. A lot of people have a bad habit of, I do myself, of rubbing my face, touching surfaces and then touching an ink pen, putting it in your mouth, things like that. We need to stop all those behaviors right now to stop that spread of germs. Cover your mouth and your nose with a tissue or your sleeve and knot your hands when coughing or sneezing and do not reuse that tissue. Throw it away. Avoid contact with others who are sick. Empty room. And any mass gatherings, that is the recommendations now. And what is our current situation? These are some statistical data. There is a total of 3,487 cases, 68 deaths, 53 jurisdictions reporting at this time. 205 of these cases are travel-related. 214 are close contacts of those travel-related cases. We have 3,000, over 3,000 people that are under investigation right now and a lot of that investigation is being done by the local health departments. So, as you can imagine, that is taxing the local health department staff to monitor all these people that are under investigation. Every state but West Virginia now has cases as of 5:00 this evening, so that is the latest update. COVID-19 cases, this says 33, but I think we're more at sitting at 37 cases in North Carolina. There have been no deaths thankfully and this is where the cases are located. You can see it's clustered around Wake and that triangle area there and then other cases. I want to give you kind of a timeline that I thought that was some important things that have happened. Of course, in December of 19, the cases were in Wuhan, China. In January, we had our first case here on the 21st. February the 11th, the Governor's Task Force was created. On March the 10th, Governor Cooper declares a state of emergency for North Carolina. And then on March the 13th, Friday the 13th, Rockingham County declares a state of emergency. And thank you for your work with that. March 14th, the executive order for school closures from March 16th to March the 20th that occur. So, this is rapidly changing. If you see this timeline, this is not a lot of time in between all these things that are happening. Let's talk about the response. The state has taken to an instant management team. We have also gone into an ISCS structure in public health and actually in the whole county at this point. The state is having daily briefings, weekly calls with the local health department, which is occurring on Tuesdays at 1:00. They're also having calls every week with the hospitals. They're sending us guidance and they are approving the testing for COVID-19. We'll talk about testing a little bit further down the road. What we're doing as a county, we have a county task force that has been initiated and we are meeting with our county partners and we had a very good meeting the other day. Lance was there and I think we got a lot of information and a lot of good input and a lot of information and things got passed. We have weekly briefings. We're having weekly calls with the hospitals. We're monitoring travelers. We did have somebody we were monitoring here in Rockingham County. He came off monitoring today, was his last day. He had actually been in China. We're sending out guidance for our providers, our community partners. We're taking many, many, many calls from residents, healthcare providers, and we're consulting with the state CD branch on suspected cases. We do have a line that we call and that we can talk to an epidemiologist and they will give us usually a pretty quick turnaround for getting information. Testing, I know, is a hot topic these days and the CDC has two confirmatory testing labs and they're doing about 350 specimens a day. CDC, the test kits we have received, we have received three here within the county, but that's kind of a little bit misleading because we can make up as many kits as we need. It's a viral transport media with a swab that we already have. So, if need be, we could test, I think we have like 17 right now. LabCorp and Quest Labs are also testing for the COVID-19. And all tests are considered presumptive positives. You guys will see that. Until it's confirmed by the CDC, they're all presumptive. And lab testing, on February 29th, the FDA expanded its criteria to qualified labs to develop its own test. On March the 5th, LabCorp began testing. On March the 9th, Quest began testing. And they taken it all in. There's a tiny fraction of the people that's being tested. On March the 11th, the CDC and public health have conducted more than 11,000 tests since mid-January. Why are we not doing more testing? In the United States, it's widespread testing is plagued by logistical issues and supply constraints. Companies have had a hard time familiarizing themselves with the test and even when the test is available, there's a question of how and where to take them. To be tested now for us requires a physician's order. It is highly contagious and so people are reluctant to test. We have physicians' offices that really don't want to test. They want to send everybody here. And what are we doing to improve the number of test sites and testing that we're doing? Public health officials and lab companies are exploring new ways of running tests, doing drive-through facilities, separation tents and setting up outside of emergency rooms. We were on a call today with UNC Rockingham. They are setting up a respiratory diagnostic center here within the county that went into operation Friday that will be utilized by their practices for UNC and they will be sending them there, testing them and helping us follow through with them if we need to. Also, Annie Penn is looking into doing the same sort of setup for their providers within the county, which would be great. So, if we have a lot of the practices taken care of, public health will focus more on the practices that are not affiliated with the hospitals. Here is our information of what we do, have been doing and how to contact and have information out there. And we have spread this all over the county and it is on the websites. It has been in every thing that we have sent out and the poison control number has been utilized greatly and that is a number that is being used by outside people. Rockingham County Health Department contact numbers, we do have a provider-only line for the healthcare providers and the hospitals to call us directly. That is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week line. It rolls from two nurses to our own-call nurse and it is very operational. I think Lance got to use that line last night. So, he did get a person. So, that is our information right now and I did have one interesting statistic if I can find it. On March the 4th, North Carolina had their first case. You're looking at March the 4th to now and all the preparation and things that have been done, we have all worked very hard to put this out to everyone in our community and work hard. I think we also need to remember that there's a lot of preventative things going on and I know a lot of people are scared and a lot of people are, maybe some people are thinking this is overkill, what we're doing, but you need to understand why the 14 days. That's the transmission period that you are infectious. If you can get everybody to stay home for 14 days, anybody who would be sick in that 14 days is kind of contained. And we will get them, they want to flatten out the curve is what they're calling it. When you see a bell curve for disease, you always see a peak. And what they want to do is try to level that peak out where we don't overwhelm our medical facilities, our ERs and our physicians and ourselves. So, that is what we're trying to do and that's what president, the government, you guys, that's what we're all working towards is to keep everybody isolated, away from each other, out of public gatherings because it is so infectious. Do you guys have any questions for me tonight? I will attempt to answer or find you an answer if I can.
Gentlemen?
I just got a comment. Just want to say thank you for you and your staff, what you're doing. I appreciate it. I know y'all have been working very hard the last couple of weeks, but I think y'all are doing an excellent job and I hope the citizens of Rockingham County knows how hard y'all are working too, so thank you.
We are trying and we will keep going to the end.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. And all your staff, please, um, share the attaboy.
I definitely will. Thank you, guys.
Dr. Shodwell, Superintendent of Rockingham County Schools. Well, we don't have an antagonistic crowd for you tonight. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I was all prepared for that, too. Mr. Chairman, board members, I'm glad to be here tonight. I couldn't remember, is the county resolution on the guaranteed energy savings first?
Capital Outlay.
Capital Outlay, okay. All righty. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you again for the one-time allocation that you all gave to us back prior to the beginning of the school year and I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed in terms of where we are. The security, we don't consider the project complete yet because there's one camera at one school that we need to install so that we can say that we had our Level 1 cameras and door access put in. And one of the things I want to say about that, too, you know, when we put in the lockdown feature, we did not realize that we're going to be, that we were going to use it twice in one week. And we did. You know, when we had the bomb threat scare that went all the way around the county, all we did was we made one call and we shut all 22 schools down at one time. And so, I mean, nobody was getting in. It didn't, it did not matter what your credentials were, being able to get into the school. Let's see, I wrote down the other time that we did it. Anyway, but, and then the principals obviously have it at their school where they have a button up front and they also can do it remotely by their phone. Also, paving, I just want to say, you wouldn't think that that would make such a difference, but the amount of calls that we have gotten about people running into a pothole, messing their car up has dropped by about 95% because of all that. And especially if you remember what the Dillard Park lot used to look like. It's definitely been a great improvement over there. With the Reesville High School roof, we're finished with that. Also, with the Stoneville roof replacement, we're finished with that project. The Reesville Middle School replacement cooler is still in progress. When you use a free service that the Department of Public Instruction has, it's a free service. They do excellent work, but it just takes some time because there's a lot of other school districts that are using that same resource. And also, the amount of money that they originally had allocated for that project was off, which you'll see in the capital request. Also with the Stonewall roof replacement, we're finished with that project. The Reedsville Middle School replacement cooler is still in progress. When you use a free service that the Department of Public Instruction has, it's a free service. They do excellent work, but it just takes some time because there's a lot of other school districts that are using that same resource. And also the amount of money that they originally had allocated for that project was off, which you'll see in the capital request that we have from the restricted sales tax. And then the other one was the interactive boards, for lack of a better way to say it. That's what everybody knows them as. But those third through fifth graders and some of the second grade teachers are extremely happy with the way that turned out. We, you know, it was a little bit of a learning curve at the beginning, but then they soon realized that it was just like their other board, except they could write on this one and they could utilize, a lot of them had a magnetic whiteboard behind their old active boards. So we actually were able to make the screen bigger and they were also able to use that board as well behind that. But they have thoroughly enjoyed that. And then we're currently working on the Rockingham County High School track. You know, weather has played a factor into that. Mr. Hall, I know you can relate to that. Every time we thought we were going to have a chance to get started, it had a way of interrupting that. But they're well on their way and we did say that they could work while we were out of school for the next two weeks. So really, there's only three projects and we'll come back and report those projects out, the track, the cooling tower, and then the security system. And also for the funds that we're requesting from the restricted sales tax, you know, we're still going to be having our budget meeting on the 23rd. And during that time, we're going to go pretty in-depth. There's about an hour dedicated. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's from 3:30 to 4:30. I'll get Renee to send it to you. But that's the time that we're going to be talking about our capital outlay needs. And so that will be the time that if you're interested in that, it will be live streamed. So if you want to tune in that way, you can. And we'll also share that list with you. But you can see from this that we, for the Western Rockingham gym, we're going to get the reimbursement back on that, but you have to have the money up front first for a portion of the project. So our insurance is paying for it. In the end, the final cost for the roof will be $5,000, which is a really good deal, knowing how much those gym roofs cost. We are also, and we were so glad that it did not come in and ruin the floor. Because as we're putting in new bleachers over there, the bleachers were in terrible shape. We are redoing the floor. And so it's going to look like a brand-new gymnasium over there when it's all said and done. We're also looking at the Morehead Gym and Locker Room roofs at the high school. That roof went from like fourth or fifth place to now. And so that's one of the projects that we have listed on here. And then the next group would be Reedsville School with another $250,000 to go along with 165,000 that you all allocated to us in August to go with that project. And then we also have an opportunity to buy a pre-owned, a four-month-old, it could be five months old when they're finished with it, cooling tower that would be able to, that we'd be able to use at Rockingham County High School to replace the tower that's there. It's normally a $200,000 tower and we're going to get it for 100,000. Also, you see on here, after the football season was over with, there was some rot with our press box. We've got Mosley Architects that are working up the drawings for us to address the issues with that, with what the engineers discovered. And also, the contract will not exceed $25,000. They just gave us an estimate of what it was going to be up to, but they're really just charging us on an hourly basis to work on that project. And then what you'll see here, the Western Rockingham tennis courts, we have secured $150,000 from the McMichael Foundation. However, it is more than $150,000 to do those. We did find a piece of land that does not have water under it because that was the problem before. And so the tennis court should last for a very long time.
We hope.
And then finally, now that's it. And then there's about $24,761 that's left. And just depending on what some of these projects either run over or under, we might have to utilize that money. We'll come back to the county manager and to you all for approval on that. Do y'all have any questions?
Lance, I think we need to approve this individually.
Uh, I'm pretty likely.
This is just capital outlay right here.
And they got the money in the restricted bonds.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
The gym at Morehead, that's the new, the new gym?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Shotwell, I just want to say I really appreciate you giving us an update about the cameras. I will say, that's the one phone call I get the most. The parents are very happy they can go to Rockingham High School and the doors are locked. They have to get buzzed in before it was a struggle, you know, anybody could just walk in. So I really appreciate that and I can appreciate you continuing to work in on that with other schools, too. So I thank you for the update on that.
You're very welcome. And I just want you to know that the second phase of the cameras with inside the school is now being worked on based on the COPH grant that we received for a half million dollars.
Mr. Chairman. And I believe your board approved this within the past month, is that correct?
Yes, I think it was the, I think it might have been the February meeting.
Okay. Well, I spoke with your chairman earlier today and so, gentlemen, I'm fairly content with the preparations made by the school system and our people keeping up with what's going on. Is there a motion to approve?
Do you want to make a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Moved in second. Further conversation? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we're very grateful.
So thank you much. Now we have a resolution.
Yes, sir. I would like to ask Kim Smith to come up here just in case you have some questions of her. I also want to thank Mr. Isley for being here, supporting us today as well, representing the Board of Education. But this is a process that we have not gone into lightly. We have actually been working on this for over two years and we have come to the apex of this project. And where the L G C, we've already had a meeting with the L G C so they could get a preliminary look at what we were doing. They only had one issue. We fixed that issue. One of the other things that we're really thankful for, too, is that the interest rate that we have received for this is 2.19%. And both of us asked, just in case, because we saw that the federal was dropping their interest rate again, we asked again, is there any way to do that? But the interest rate for this kind of project is tied to municipal bonds, so it's in a different category. But it never hurts to ask. All they can do is tell you no.
Agreed.
But really what we're coming here for is to ask you all to, basically, for our budget not to be reduced so that we can keep that, what we have set aside for energy consumption, it would stay the same way. And we're taking that money and the savings difference in that is what's going to pay for this project over 19 years.
Questions?
Dr. Shotwell, is this the same kind of contract that the county had with the energy savings?
Only better.
And we had so much problems out of?
The, it's not anything like that.
Well, the reason I wanted you to bring it up is, you know, I know sometimes they said, okay, we want temperature to be this in this room. Well, it might be cold and we want it turned up. So, but we got a contract and you can't turn it up. You see, I didn't know if you...
Well, we've already been with synergistic for the last five years where we've saved 3.2 million dollars.
Right.
And, you know, we know people need to be comfortable. And so we made those parameters in place. And also Johnson Control knows that, too.
Right. I just didn't want you to make the same mistakes that we did when we signed our contract with them. Because I think we're still fighting them now or...
We're starting to look a lot better now.
Okay.
It's taken a long time.
Okay. Just make sure you was aware of some of the problems we had.
And we also have a third-party engineer that's double-checking to make sure
Right.
that every product that they had on there is going to garner the savings. Because our biggest savings are going to come through the lights and water.
Right.
And I'm really excited about the plumbing piece because, I know, how can you get excited about plumbing, but I can. That we're going to have a unified system for our flushers across the whole district so that we're not having to go out there and say, hey, you know, you think that you've got a Delta, but no, it's a Manning.
Right.
It's all going to be the same.
One last thing I had is, you're looking for cost savings, but actually it's a taxpayer's cost savings.
Yes, sir.
It's not a school cost savings, taxpayer's cost savings. So is that cost savings ever going to make its way back to your budget?
After 19 years.
19 years. Holy crap.
But you got to understand...
19 years.
But you have to understand, though, at the same time, you're doing 8.5 million dollars in capital improvements and it's not costing you all a dime out of your budget.
I understand, but by the time 19 years went around, your budget will be almost double.
You heard it here, folks. It's going to be double in 19 years.
Wow. 19 years.
Dr. Shotwell, one of the questions that I have with regards to this project, and you touched on it earlier, I'd like to expand, is, you know, if we have mild weather, it may appear that we're saving money. In reality, we're not saving that much money. And if it's, if it was real extreme weather, it might appear that we're not saving money when in fact we may be saving a lot. Is there a formula in place that takes into account the weather? And you said earlier that the HVAC systems weren't a large part of the savings of this plan. Is that...
That's correct. Because the payback period on those HVAC systems are beyond the period of this loan. And so we're at, so by having the savings with the light and the water, that's what we're able to use on it to be able to pay for some of the HVAC projects that we have on there. Because like right now, Rockingham County High School, I can't drop the cooling temperature below 58 degrees. Because if I do, I'm going to have humidity problem. I'm going to have a rain forest going on in the school.
And so that is one of the projects that's included in this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because we looked at that. And so this is a very quantifiable savings that you'll be able to quantify.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Travis?
I'm sorry. And I agree with the energy savings. I mean, the county saved some money and I hope y'all do, too. Because, you know, we're all accountable, we're taxpayers no matter what we do. But let me ask you this, 19 years and you're asking us to maintain your budget as what it is now. Is that utility budget or all budget?
It's the utility budget, but I mean, it would be nice if you at least keep our budget the same or more.
Right, I understand. But the reason I'm asking that, is that you expect that budget to stay the same even if you have a decrease in student population or if you shut down another school?
Well, right now, we've plateaued some. So I don't foresee the closing down another school because right now I'm trying to figure out where to put 120 kids. It's southbound.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying 19 years is a lot can change.
It can.
So 10 years from now, you might want to shut down a school. Does that mean I still have to maintain the same budget?
Actually, I hope I could come back and tell you that we need to build some because the population has moved. Because I think the things that you all are doing to encourage economic growth in the county and the finish of the Greensboro Loop
Right.
and 73 and Designating 785 are going to do some things here that's going to cause people to live in Rockingham County. Because, I mean, I could say it, been here 14 years, this was a wonderful place to have kids. And it's a wonderful place to enjoy the outdoors. But if you need to go to the big city, that's fine. But most of us like going down to downtown Reedsville, Madison, Maydan, and Eden and enjoying the comforts of being in a small town like that.
Right. I agree.
Yeah, I think you touched on it earlier. You said there was about eight and a half million dollars?
Yes, sir.
In upgrades, capital improvements?
Yes.
That we'd have to do anyway.
Yeah, and needs to be done, yes, sir.
So about half of this money is, whether we entered into this contract or not, would have to be spent and it would come out of our cash flow instead of out of this cash flow for this loan.
Yes, sir. This is one of the few times where, well, this is the only time that we can use current expense paid for capital improvements. And if we were also, if you'll remember this, I know some of y'all were around, but back in the early 90s when the state first approved these energy performance contracts, Rockingham County was the very first school district in the state to do it. And we saw savings then. And so, and it was also with Johnson Controls. So we've had a longstanding relationship with them. You know, going back to your question, too, when we changed the lighting out, it's going to change some of the things that happen in some of the classrooms. The heat that you have is going to be a lot less because of the LED lights.
So LEDs generate less heat, which will require less cooling in the summer.
We actually have to add into the savings that it'll make the conditional heat, you know, the heat most temperatures where they need to be.
I agree with Dr. Shotwell. The water is the outstanding thing. No more running water. Huge savings.
Well, can we come back to the resolution?
Yep.
Do we need further information to consider this resolution?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Congratulations.
And thank you all.
All the good work, Danny. Good stuff.
You guys have been a wonderful partner for us and helping us with a lot of projects. And again, on behalf of my board, but mainly on behalf of my kids in Rockingham County Schools, thank you so very much. We appreciate all your support and help.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Shotwell? Mr. Metzler, do we have new business?
Yes, sir, we have three things. One is the approval of fees for the public help for the COVID-19 response, approval of the COVID-19 policy, and a briefing on the COVID-19 action plan. But first, the consideration of approval of the fees for public help. You should have that in front of you.
Is this a staff of recommendations?
Yes. Paul, make sure to...
That's okay. Do we need any talk or can we go ahead and do a motion?
I guess my only question is, what did we base the fees off of? Was it what other counties are doing? Is this something that, you know, how did we come up with a number? And it's just more for informational purposes.
I agree. I mean, how we came up with the numbers? How do we use the numbers? We look at what Medicaid...
If you could...
What we do is usually we look at what Medicaid has reimbursed and then we look at what other counties are getting for the same service. And we kind of do a median number in between. And the reason we're doing these codes is for the COVID-19 in case we want to have our providers call a person at home instead of bringing them into the office, then we can get some sort of reimbursement. And that's what the state has advised us to do.
And I would just say that it sounds like this is a figure that we wouldn't mind, I hope, adjusting at any point you believe that we may need to adjust this since this is a new thing we're dealing with.
Okay, thank you.
Rest of the commissioners, okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So motion to approve?
Motion to approve. And second, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I've asked the staff to come in here to join me in case they need to fill in, but this right here is the policy. We're going to talk about that first. I want to thank the Communicable Disease Task Force from last week. We had a great meeting. We had a meeting, it's all kind of dominoed from the declaration on Friday till today. We met yesterday, Sunday at 3:00. We met for a while to talk about different strategies. But first, the policy in place that I would like you all to consider. The action plan doesn't need to have any action. It just needs to be looked at and discussed if you need to take anything off of or change it. But it's an action plan for the staff. But the first, the policy, and I'll just go through it briefly. The goals of this policy is to minimize gatherings of staff and of citizens, reduce contact between the public and the staff, disperse staff so they're not working in close proximity to include telework when possible, and to limit the spread of the COVID-19 virus to other employees and the public while maintaining critical services. So first, we're looking at mandatory leave, which employees who exhibit symptoms of the coronavirus will be prohibited from reporting to work. In addition to those who decide to stay at home, department heads may also send employees home until cleared to return work if they exhibit symptoms that they're uncertain about. During this time, employees have the following options to utilize leave. Employees may utilize leave in the following order: compensatory time first, then sick time, then vacation time, then unpaid time if they don't have any time left. The employee could use vacation or unpaid leave prior to sick if requested. Teleworking, employees may be able to effectively work from home. The county may make accommodations to make this happen if applicable. Each request will be a case by case and recommended by the department head and approved by the county manager. Leave for necessity, employees who must be out of work due to the COVID-19-related impacts on children or family may be allowed to use leave in the same order as mandatory leave. Employees must get prior authorization from the department head. And we've talked to a lot of other counties like this who don't have, they might have employees who are new, and they don't have any accumulated sick leave. So advancing sick leave slash shared leave, we understand employees may not have enough accrued sick leave that would be required to be away from work due to the coronavirus. The county would upfront ten business days or eighty hours, working hours of sick leave, if needed, and all the other leaves exhausted. Yes, sir.
Now, I know we get the emails that are countywide emails. When I say countywide, I mean amongst employees. And we constantly see shared sick leave, so I'm sure that that's still available even in this instance. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There would be.
I got one question. Just a question, Lance. You know, if an employee gets COVID, and we need to send them home, you think it's appropriate for us to make them use sick time or vacation time, or should we just send them home with pay?
No, I haven't seen any other places that have done that. They've made them take the vacation or sick time.
We're giving them extra ten days sick time.
That's if they have an accrued, if they only have, say, twenty hours accrued, you're going to give them ten days, and they have to reimburse, they have to reimburse the county those days while they're working here. For some reason, they leave before that time, then they'll have to reimburse the county the amount at their final pay period.
The only reason I brought it up, you know, the school sent everybody home for almost a freaking month, and with pay, so I didn't know if you wanted to treat our employees like that or not.
We have to stay like everybody else is doing right now.
Sounds good.
Obviously, it's a privacy issue that we're have to deal with, as with any other illness, is employees' information is confidential. Employees who feel like they've been exposed need to inform their supervisor or human resources. One thing in here that I have that I want to pay, you guys pay close attention to, is on the back, it's temporary authority for manager to alter personnel policy. Since this situation is rapidly changing, I would also request that the board grant me the ability to amend the personnel policy. As needed, any changes will be reported to the chairperson.
I would think that they'd be reported to the entire board.
Chair and the entire board.
Okay.
It's just, these things are constantly changing, and things need to be changed immediately.
So you want to change, report it to your chairperson and board commissioners?
Just the board of commissioners.
Board of commissioners.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to change it that way. And if you guys want to discuss, if it's imperative, and we need to act on it, we'll act on it. It's my job to make sure these guys know about anything.
But he's not asking for permission, he's saying he's just going to report it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought it was permission.
No, I agree with you. If it was that, I would agree with you.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, a question. Lance, I know we opted Friday to go into a county, a state of emergency as a county. Part of the reasons, one of the reasons we did that is to put ourselves, position ourselves to receive any federal funds that may be incurred as a result of this pandemic that's facing our region, our country. And my question is this, and part of that also to backfill some of our unanticipated expenses to include labor.
If those funds are made available for that, then we should be reimbursed for that. So we'll keep up those times.
And that's where I'm getting it, that's where I'm driving to.
So if they use those, and we get reimbursed by the federal government, then that would go back towards the employees.
So that's what I'm saying. So the employee, if they use their time, but then we get some reimbursement, we will credit them back their sick time.
That's right, that's perfect. I like it.
That's what, and we said in here, I think, and I was not paying as close, I missed the section, where you talked about forwarding, advancing the sick leave. We're going to advance as many as ten days.
Yes.
And I would I would consider, and I asked this board to consider adjusting that.
Fourteen days?
You're going fourteen, fourteen days. Then we only going to give them ten days?
Well, ten is ten business days, fourteen days total.
It's ten five days a week, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I do. But the fact of the matter is, we're
It's the pleasure of the board, I mean, if you guys want to increase that.
I'd like to see a little bit of wiggle room in that. I mean, up to, I know we say ten days, I don't know. We got somebody from the health department here that can tell us if that's a, if they think that's a good number, or should we be concerned? But those are demonstrating the symptoms. That's just a quarantine time. That's not necessarily the symptom time. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we possibly can.
Right, and the quarantine period is, the standard is what they're saying is fourteen days. I mean, but there could always be extenuating circumstance. It depends on the severity of illness in the person. If, you know, if an older person or one of our older employees, you know, got this, and they had to be in the hospital, had to be on a ventilator, of course, that's going to change the ballgame. They're going to be out a lot longer than fourteen days. It just depends on the severity of illness and the age of the employee.
That's where I was driving it. It could be more, I think it could be more than, and plus, we're counting on them getting it on a Monday. That may not happen either.
You just want to say fourteen days?
I mean, I-
Fourteen business days?
I'd say calendar days. I'd say fifteen calendar days.
Fifteen calendar.
Fifteen calendar days?
Yeah, I mean, if I-
I'd like to know how we match up with other counties. Have you had that discussion?
The ones that we've talked to thus far has been ten days or eighty hours.
Yeah.
Here's what I would throw out.
The last one's going to give them a chance to move it around anyway.
Here's what I would throw out there is, if we end up with employees that need more time, then bring this policy back to us at the very next meeting, and we can
Adjust.
Yeah, we can talk about it then, without getting into specifics.
Select group, yeah, because most of your people have, well, I wouldn't say most, quite a few have a lot built, time built up. But we certainly will if it's a-
Yeah, I just, my biggest thing was, is that we have a lot of folks that are in contact in the public health field, and in social services that are in contact, and public safety, anywhere in this building that is in contact with folks, and they're subject to, if they get this virus, they're subject to get it right here. And we need to take care of them. We need to make sure that, you know, that doing their job shouldn't cost them.
I want to hear Mr. Berger finish his train of thought, please.
I thought I was best with that one.
I want to hear you think some more.
As far as getting reimbursed by the federal government for any FEMA money, do we need any language in here pertaining to that being credited back to the employees?
We can always add that, so that if they do, if they do credit the county with that, then we'll credit that to the employees. So if you guys can approve that with that contingency added to that, we can make the language up.
Okay, yeah. And I think it's as simple as, for any employee that utilizes sick time, if the county's reimbursed-
Then they'll be reimbursed.
Yeah, then that reimbursement would flow to the employee. So I mean, I think it's fairly simple, at least at this point in the game. It may change later, but-
And to add, would you say maybe it ought to be, it would be reimbursed past the fourteen days that they incurred, if that makes sense? Because we're going to give them the first ten days.
We're not giving them, they then have to accrue that. This is for employees that have not earned up to that amount of time, so.
They're advancing it.
We would advance it, is what this says.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And so.
Lance, the only question I have is, you know, this virus is so contagious, they're telling people, if anybody in your household has it, you know, stay home. Are you going to put anything here that if a child gets it, or a relative in the household, that we are going to mandate that that employee stays home too?
That's under leave, family necessity under that.
But it's not mandating.
Well, that would be at the, I mean, that would be at the discretion of the department head.
You see what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, we've got several people right now that, well, not several, we've got a few people right now that we're dealing with with that.
I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to put this into policy. If you have a family member in your household that's kind, you know, got this, then you're mandated to get your fourteen days.
This right here will allow us a basis. This, you just need to allow staff a little flexibility in this, and we'll make sure it's-
Mr. Hall. Yeah, that's the point I was going to make, to address Commissioner Pertle and Commissioner Berger's comments, as well as some of mine. We are granting the manager the ability to temporarily amend the policy as needed. So he'll have that ability to change this as needed. And I think, as Commissioner Berger rightly pointed out, he could just bring that to us at a later time.
And again, this wouldn't be, what I mean, when I say notify, I mean like notify, phone call, or email, because this stuff changes fluid. And this isn't for an infinite period, it's for a finite period.
You need a motion?
And I would just tell you, I appreciate, I called Lance, talked with Commissioner Pertle, called Lance on Saturday, late afternoon, and just told him to start brainstorming, and I was pleasantly surprised that he organized a meeting of many folks on Sunday afternoon, and got this back to us very quick. So certainly appreciate Lance's and staff's-
I want to point out, the ones that were there was Susan, Melissa, Derek, Kate, Chris, and Paul. They did it, we did a great job. We all worked together. I think we fed off each other and really have something to at least start with.
And when I say pleasantly surprised, I mean, it is a fluid situation. It is something that has to be adjusted really daily, and just was trying to start the conversation, so.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate you hopping on it so fast.
Need a motion?
Further discussion? Hearing none. We'd accept a motion?
Motion to approve of Rocketham County COVID-19 policy as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay.
Now, next, the action plan, and we can open this for discussion, but I do want to read, I know you guys can read, I mean, but I just, I want to do this for the purpose of the public, so they can hear what we've done so far. So you got three different sections, you've got completed, you've got planned, you've got currently being investigated. Some of it's countywide, some of it's individual departments. So countywide, we've ceased all nonessential meetings across all departments. Information shared with media requests that citizens to call in advance of coming to governmental center, see if their needs can be met by phone, email, or online services. Conference calls and video calls are now available by default in county calendars. State of emergency declared to ensure county can draw down the funds, created a policy that you guys just had approved, canceled all out-of-county travel, except approval by the manager. What we're planning is to create a central intake using tents outside at key locations, and this, we're going to start this tomorrow afternoon, with our fingers crossed. Citizens will be asked to wait in their vehicle rather than in waiting areas. Interest parking lots limited to control traffic and funneled by check-in tents. Departments to identify essential staff needed, which means they're going to go ahead and prepare. So if we have to enter into phase two, which Commissioner Berger and I had talked about today, that will be part of phase two. This will assist in the event more significant measures are needed. Establish teleworking request forms and codes in the county's payroll system to ensure this type of arrangements properly pre-approved and tracked. Establish COVID-19 time tracking forms related to state of emergency. Establish cleaning procedures and timeframes for departments to follow daily. So what we're going to do with staff, with our maintenance, is we are getting what's called a deep clean, and you fill it with hydrogen peroxide in those areas that are where people gather and have to go to, like in the nursing stations and certain areas. We're going to deep clean those on a regular basis, so that the contamination's not there. At the animal shelter, suspend all nonessential public events, such as spay neuter clinics. We're planning to set up tents in front of the shelter for animal surrenders and other similar processes, provide as many services as possible curbside, and currently be investigating its adoption procedures, to see if we're going to have them come in or suspend those totally. Central permitting, planning inspections, discuss planning board meeting system with affected citizens, see if they can be delayed until future meetings. Cancel planning board meetings if there's no business or pressing business to discuss. Plan is encourage developers to submit all materials digitally. Use central intake tents to limit citizens in waiting areas, follow strategic cleaning procedures. Fire marshal, planned is cancel all nonessential fire inspections. Since the schools are shut down right now, they won't need to inspect the schools. The governing body, alter layout of commissioners' chambers, so each public seats are at least six feet. And see, this has changed since then, since we created this earlier. Six feet apart from each other. Cancel all nonessential meetings for other boards and commissions, such as the Hunting and Wildlife, Teen Leadership, ETC. And I think that Reese had mentioned to reach out, and Jennifer, I don't know if I talked to you about that today, about reaching out to the boards that the commissioners serve on, to see if they're going to cancel their meetings.
I'm sorry, you check on that?
That's some of those. That's it. I talked to her about it.
Okay. Economic development, cancel all nonessential outreach, like visiting the sites of the different industries and commercial. Engineering and public utilities, stockpile cleaning disinfectant supplies, and create a supply closet for departments. We have been able to get some of that. Delay noncritical, regular scheduled projects, which we have put all those projects to halt while we use the maintenance staff. We're going to move child support today. We postpone that until further notice, because we need to use that staff in other areas. Utilize cleaning, planned is utilize cleaning and maintenance staff to disinfect governmental center as frequent as possible, and to purchase deep cleaning machine to disinfect facilities. I think we just ordered that this afternoon. Finance and purchasing, establish payroll codes for telework, as well as sick and vacation leave, taken for cedentis, reasons to increase accountability and transparency, and then guidelines for purchasing COVID-related equipment. Human resources, we're going to halt all noncritical in-person interviews, postpone employee service awards, which I think we had planned for this week or next week. And then planned is establish telework approval process. IT, delay all noncritical planned projects, support the equipment, infrastructure, needs of all telework, central intake tents, and other related issues. And just show you how times have come. I remember fifteen years ago, working on issues like this when I was on the eastern shore, you know, IT wasn't even part of the conversation. Now, it's part of every conversation that we have. Library, cancel all in-person programming, close or significantly limit access to the libraries by the public, is planned, and then currently being investigated, is use libraries as additional remote sites for county staff. Some great discussion with Commissioner Berger, and potentially open libraries to students who need internet access. Public health, use new central intake tents to limit the number of citizens in the waiting area. Establish staff that work in closed quarters, may work from home, or potential in a remote location at manager's discretion. We looked at upstairs, the different departments upstairs, you know, there's the cubicles, and we're talking with Melissa, I think that most of them can work remotely. Derek, remotely. I think they use the iCloud, so they can, they'll be able to do that, so we can disperse those individuals. Registered deeds promote use of Get Certificate Now Online, systems for citizens who need eligible records. Sheriff's Office onsite, video visitation in the jail is suspended. Legal visitation and pastoral care will continue as normal. Community watch events and other community programs are suspended. Social services, eligible staff that work in closed quarters may work from home or potentially in a remote location at manager's discretion. Integrated health, monitor existing caseload, and then provide assistance to social services and public health, and EMS as needed. Tax, open the window normally served for property tax payments, and that's to be able to communicate with the citizens without having them come back to the offices. Limit citizens that are brought into the tax department. Veterans, limit home visits in walking traffic as much as possible. Youth services, completed, as cancel all nonessential classes, and then planned is to conduct as much business as possible via phone, and limit home visits as much as possible. So this is our plan right now, and again, it may change tomorrow morning. Is there anything you all want to add, change, delete, discuss? We've certainly got the task force here to be able to discuss.
Well, I think it would be a fairly lengthy conversation, and I think acknowledgement, it is a work in progress, and we're going to go day by day. I bet every one of us goes home and we thinks of something that is-
If you do, hey, we're up at anything.
I might wait till the morning to call.
Call me tonight, doesn't matter.
Questions, comments?
Again, I just appreciate everyone's work on this, and in a very timely manner, and of course, we expect it to change at this point, so.
Lance, are you planning to get your group together again? Is this a, you're going to meet daily or?
Together on a regular basis, probably at least three, four times what we could be daily.
Yeah, I just know the CDC changes their recommendations, and had that happen again today, so.
Counting how many of you there are.
I'd like to-
We got less than ten.
I'd like to echo the sentiments, Commissioner Berger. Thank you, everyone, for the work you've put in on this, this weekend, and at other times. We appreciate your leadership on this, Lance.
Thank you, guys.
I think we ought to approve this as a starting point for processes and procedures within the county.
I'll make that motion.
Moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
I want to caveat with that, if you'll just, you approve this, but again, it could be very fluid, so it might change, and with your permission to change it- So it might change and with your permission to change it as needed without, or bring to your attention forever.
I thought that was understood.
Yes, and I mean, I think we as a board are ready whenever you need us. And we understand that, I mean, it could get to a point where you need an emergency meeting. And if so, then, you know, we certainly available for that. But we'll just wait to hear from you.
Okay, thank you.
Other new business?
That's it.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Travis?
No comment.
No comment? Mr. Pertle?
I'd just like to say, Commissioner Berger then stole a little of my thunder, but I wanted to thank that conversation. I know I've talked to Lance probably several times over the course of the last three or four days. And Commissioner Berger and I talked and I talked to him again. And the next thing I know, he then rallied the team and had him here on Sunday for numerous hours. And I know that the three or four times I've talked to you today, this had, this had your full attention. And working closely because I know it's a fluid situation. It's going to continue to change. And I feel very confident having you leading this team, addressing the needs of this county. So thank you to, and thank you to members of your team for what they do.
Commissioner Berger?
Certainly I want to thank Roy for getting everything ready tonight with the changes that even occurred this afternoon as far as size of crowds. It's recommended by the CDC and President Trump. So we would have a much more difficult time pulling off what we have been able to pull off and what staff's been able to pull off without Roy's help. So certainly appreciate that. And I think that also includes Derek and his staff because all of this is tied into the IT department. So certainly appreciate what you're doing. And I know Derek's going to be taxed a little bit more in the future as we look at working remotely and answering those questions, so. And then just a bit of information for the public. As schools are, I guess, postponed or whatever may end up happening there, our university system, which is one of the best, if not the best, does have some materials available for families. They have information about the virus, how to speak with different age children, and also some materials so that those kids can work and study from home. The website to go to is ed.unc.edu. And there's quite a bit of information there. And that information will evolve on a regular basis as well. So thank you for tuning in and appreciate everyone working so hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I certainly miss our audience tonight. We appreciate all those who did brave coming out tonight and the unique circumstances that we have. So I do appreciate that. Again, thank you, staff, for your work this weekend getting this plan put together. I'd also like to thank our elected officials in attendance tonight. I saw Sheriff Sam Page earlier. I appreciate him being here. And school board member Doug Isling, thank you for being here. And former commissioner Keith Duncan with his presentation tonight. We appreciate you guys being here and your willingness to serve the county. Thank you, other presenters, for coming tonight. We appreciate you braving, coming out and traveling to be here to present to us tonight. So thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you much, Commissioner Hall. I thought the presentation by ex-commissioner Duncan was indicative of the many fine volunteers that we have in this county doing very important work for us. And I get to see some of the stuff that, so does Commissioner Pertle, that Commissioner Duncan has continued to do. And so we appreciate that. And if you do have a volunteer that you think we should recognize, please let us know. The best way to do that is let Jennifer Woods know about it and we'll get recognition in line. I want to recognize Commissioner Pertle, who was recently chose as one of five across the state, I believe, to look for the association of county commissioners in this state at opioid litigation. And we appreciate Commissioner Pertle being willing to serve on this opioid litigation working group so that this situation is resolved, at least economically, as best we can. I'd like to recognize the YMCA, particularly in Reedsville, that had stepped up to assist first responders with childcare. And you can go on the Reedsville website and look up the YMCA. And if you're a first responder, you can, you may be able to get some needed help with childcare as we go through this process. I don't have all the answers for the schedule of the commissioners' board meeting. Again, a work in progress. We'll look at it as of right now. We're planning on coming back, the scheduled date, probably in the same format that we did this evening. But I would ask you to pay attention to our website and see what's on tap. And use telecommunication as much as you can. We need to try a little harder, I think, to make sure we get the word out and nobody's left out.